This is the Township of Ocean Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Brody.
Here.
Mr. Benaghetto.
Mr. Delia.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Good.
Mr. Close.
Yes.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
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 Call for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements for the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on June 12, 2018. There's an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and the two exits in the rear of the room. There is no smoking. Board policy is no new cases will be started after 10:30 p.m. and no new testimony taken after 11:00 p.m. In addition, each applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phone telephones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please stop outside of the meeting office to make your call. At this point, I think that we are going to swear in the members of the Planning Board that are eligible.
I'm reappointed.
Reappointed, sorry. You're correct.
I have to announce that the board is not in the state.
Okay, whoever's being reappointed, please stand.
Yes.
Sandy?
We have four members, but you raise your right hand and you can start stating in unison the oath.
I.
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 Perfect.
Congratulations.
I'm going to pass it down.
Yep.
Okay, the next order of business tonight is to elect chairman to the Planning Board. Are there any... That someone wish to propose a chairman? Anyway, well, I will. I propose that we reelect Chairman Burley. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Fiano?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Pass.
Our next order would be to elect the vice chairman, and I will recommend or put forward the name of Warren Good.
I second.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Chirano?
Yes.
Yes.
Our next order of business is to approve the meeting dates for the upcoming year. I believe that they've been posted. Does anyone care to have the dates read? So I have a positive recommendation to accept the meeting dates as posted?
I'll second.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
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 Close? Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Fiano?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
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 The next order of business is to appoint the Planning Board attorney. I make the recommendation that we reappoint Sanford D. Brown. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
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 Close? Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next order of business would be to appoint the Planning Board planner. Do I have any...
I'll move that. Mr. Higgins?
Mr. Higgins.
I'll second.
On a second. Thank you.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Close? Yes.
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 The next order of business is to appoint the board engineer. Do I have anybody? Any proposal?
Dominique Bill Fitzgerald?
Fitzgerald.
I'll second.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Close? Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Yes.
A next point of business is to appoint the Planning Board secretary. I will recommend that we reappoint Rachel Montamorano.
I'll second.
We all got into the action.
Those are gonna get killed here.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Close? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fiano?
Yes.
And the last part of this section of our meeting tonight will be the swearing in of our professionals. Would you all please rise?
Rachel, do you have the certification? Okay, all right. Well, we'll have Mr. Kurt speaking on your behalf. For members of the public, these professionals testify throughout the year, so part of this oath is to swear that anything they say at any meeting is under oath without certifying that every meeting. So with that in mind, I'd ask you, like your work members before, you ready to read it?
In unison, yep.
I.
I.
James Higgins. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that all testimony, thus provided, bring all hearings throughout my term, to the record, and therefore be under legal obligations to give due to the law. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Township of Ocean Planning Board Engineer, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Well done.
Okay, our next piece of business tonight is a carry case to August 27, 2018. The applicant is Brielle Avenue LLC, Block 184, lots 1 and 4, 1304 to 1306 Brielle Avenue in Ocean, that's carried to the 27th of August. We have a resolution memorialization, Patricia Talarico, DC Nutrition and Weight Loss Center of Ocean, Block 33 dot 33, Lot 1, 1809 Highway 35, Oakhurst. Do we have that resolution done? Okay.
It's posted.
It's posted. Okay, thank you. Does anyone care to have it read? Okay. Want... We're gonna vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion? Okay. I make a motion that we vote on the memorialization.
I second.
Okay.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delia? Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mr. Fiano?
Yes.
Okay. A new case for tonight, Andrew Garrity, Block 904, 9.04, lots 7, 8, and 9, 238 Dixon Avenue, Elveron Park, Zone is R4.
Good evening, Chad Warnkin of Archer Griner on behalf of the applicant, the Garrities, and I've got with me Mark Garrity, the applicant's son, as well as Tim Lurie, our professional engineer, professional... I don't know if we'd like to swear on both of them first.
I think that we swear them in as we take testimony.
Great. Okay. This is about... Block 9.04, existing lots 7, 8, and 9. There are three undersized lots, one of which has an existing single-family home and a detached garage right along the back property line. The applicant is looking to subdivide those three lots into two new lots, which will be nonconforming but more conforming than the existing three lots that are there. Proposed lot 7.01 will be 83.3 feet in width, 490 feet required. It'll have 10,000 square feet in size. Lot 9.01 is 76.7 feet in width and will be 10,000 square feet.
Counsel?
Yes.
The way we usually proceed here is after you've given your brief introduction, then we have our planner and engineer go through their reports. You'll probably find that they're gonna fill in what you might say, so you can both have a seat. So...
Mr. Chairman, should we ask Mr. Higgins?
I think we would start Mr. Higgins, sure.
Just to clarify, counsel was talking about the subject site as three lots, three tax lots. For the purposes of planning and zoning, it's one parcel.
Right.
What I'm talking about here, we're talking about one parcel in my report, not about three.
Okay.
The applicant's proposing to subdivide an existing 19,200 square foot lot, raising existing residents and create two building lots of 10,000 square feet and 9,200 square feet. The site is a 19,200 square foot corner lot with 120 feet of frontage on Elm Avenue and 160 feet of frontage on Dixon Avenue. It's occupied by a single-family residence that is situated in the center of the lot base on Dixon Avenue. The site is in a neighborhood of single-family residences on lots ranging from 5,000 square feet to 19,200 square feet, which is the subject site. Subject site is the largest lot in immediate area. Within 200 feet of the subject site, there are 24 lots. Of the 24, nine are nonconforming with regard to lot width and lot area. The site is located within the R4 zone, which requires a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 90 feet. Subject site fully conforms, but is nearly two times the minimum lot area for the zone. The proposed lots require the following variances. Lot 701, minimum lot width, the ordinance requires minimum lot width of 90 feet, and the subject lot has a width of 83.33 feet on its Dixon Avenue frontage. Lot meets the minimum lot area and all other bulk requirements of the R4 zone. This corner residential lot, Lot 6, to the immediate south of this lot, has a width of 60 feet. Lot 9.01, minimum lot area and width, the ordinance requires a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 90 feet, and the subject lot has an area of 9,200 square feet and a width of 76.67 feet. Lot 10, to the immediate west of the subject site, has an area of 7,800 square feet and a width of 65 feet. Lot 5, to the immediate south of both lots, has an area of 18,000 square feet and a width of 150 feet. I stated earlier in this report, of the 24 lots within 200 feet of the subject property, nine or 37.5% have areas in width that are nonconforming. All nine have areas and widths less than the two proposed lots. A total of six of those nine have widths of 50 feet. The applicant needs to present testimony with, in regard to the positive and negative criteria for the granting of these variances. With regard to the positive criteria, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there is a practical and undue hardship that results from the configuration of the lot or that the benefits of granting of the variances substantially outweigh the detriments. It should be noted that with regard to hardship, it is not necessary for the applicant to demonstrate that the property cannot be used, but that due to the circumstance involving the shape, topography, or other legally existing condition of the property, the site cannot be developed in a manner that is consistent with the ordinance's requirements. With regard to negative criteria, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there are no significant detriments that result to adjacent properties or the zone plan. In this instance, the application complies with all other bulk requirements of the ordinance, including setbacks, building coverage, and building height. Consequently, there does not seem to be any substantial detriment with regard to adjacent properties or the zone. Let's look through that last page. Waiver Analysis Tree Location and Preservation Plan. The ordinance requires that all subdivisions include a tree location and preservation plan. In this instance, no new development is being proposed. It is clear that at some time in the future, lots will be developed and some trees will be removed. Consequently, any approval should contain the condition that a tree location plan be provided that identifies an existing six-inch or greater... An existing tree six inches or greater on the entire lot, that a tree location and preservation plan be submitted and approved prior to removal of the existing residents and any construction on either lot. In this regard, it's possible that the house will be removed prior to any construction on either lot and that there may be or may not be tree removal associated with that demolition. Consequently, a tree location and preservation plan should be submitted prior to any such removal, as well as any proposed construction on either lot.
Mr. Higgins, are you recommending that we have the tree location and preservation plan now?
I'm recommending there be a tree location plan now.
Now?
Prior to removal of the house, that a tree location and preservation plan be submitted to that one activity. But then when they develop the ballot of the site, there's gonna be additional trees removed, so for each of those houses, it should also be submitted. It just doesn't make sense to do it now, so we don't know it's gonna be done.
Right. Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have a report dated today. Mr. Chairman, as you can probably tell from the council's introductory comments and Mr. Higgins' report, it's all about planning. This subdivision has been there, well, map was filed in the early 1920s, so it's fully developed, has been for a long time. Consequently, my concern is if the board approves it, not whether or not it does, but if it does, I'm concerned about three things. Number one, prior to filing the map, well, all of these things, prior to filing a map and actually creating a subdivision. Applicant posts a bond for and complete demolition of existing on-site improvements, because none of them can remain, as I see it, in connection with a development proposal for the two lots if they are created. Number two, applicant shall demonstrate via soil testing and/or analysis, to my satisfaction, that impacts of added impervious cover can be fully mitigated. I want to note that under current ordinance, when they create the two lots, they'll be vacant lots. We allow 90% coverage of, in this case, 75% of total lot area. That would be a major development under stormwater regulations. So what we have required in these cases, I tried to spell out in two, we require that they demonstrate that they can mitigate that, not that that design be provided, and that applicant form a homeowner's association. And the reason for that is that the state law and the DEP has agreed with my reading of it. I'm not pro or con, I just read it as it's written, and what it says is when you have a development like this, of more than one single-family home, you cannot put the burden of stormwater management on one homeowner. So we've had another minor subdivision in Oakhurst fairly recently with the same thing. They had to form a homeowner's association, even though it was a minor subdivision, well, it was a major, because they had an extended sanitary suite, but minor in terms of number of lots, just to comply. So we would require all of these things to be satisfactorily done prior to filing of the map, creating the lots.
Great, just wanted to ask. Jim, so as part of that preservation plan and all the, whatever the recommendations from the Environmental Commission, that'll be like part of that negotiation, so to speak?
Yeah, Sheriff came in after my report was done.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think they're consistent, anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Why has this area had so many variances in it? Like the surrounding...
It went back to, when the file map, as I said, was done in around 1924. And in those days, the, I don't know whether it was the rigor or whatever, but when they did these subdivisions, they created these 25-foot lots. In some places in town, it had to be, you got a free 25-foot lot if you bought a subscription to a newspaper, because the newspaper... But having said that, this particular, because I lived on Dixon Avenue for 10 years, my lot was 257, catty corner next block kind of thing. But it, my had like 11 lots of, well, the tract that we got our from was like 11 lots, 25 feet wide, except for the end on the corner. That was an oddball kind of thing. And then that was, the tax assessor over the years would block it into tax lots by ownership. But that didn't eliminate all those little lots. Then that was done by Al Bedello, I want to say 20 years ago, plus or minus, early 90s. And so that's why the tax map looks like it does now. But if you go back and look in the archives and take a look at some old tax maps, you'll see, and this, there are hundreds and hundreds of lots.
So, yeah, but, so the makeup of the area, it's consistent to have, the lot size that they're proposing is consistent with the area?
Well, a lot of the makeup was done before we had a zoning ordinance. That's the problem, goes back to early...
According to your stats, that's what you have, that the lot size is kind of consistent, that the idea of not having 90-foot front?
Yeah. It's not inconsistent.
It's not inconsistent. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Warnkin?
Thank you very much. My first witness is Mark Garrity. If I could swear.
Yep.
All right, raise your right hand. You promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. We sit?
Yeah, we sit, sure.
Mark, so the applicant here is your father, Andrew? That's correct. Okay, how long has the family been in town and on the property? My family's been in Ocean Township over 100 years, serving in public service, police department, many times in my oral shift here. And they've owned the, they bought this house in 1938, is that correct? Yeah, '38, '39, yes. Okay, and that was your grandfather? Yes. And now it's passed along to your father, who's the current owner? Yes. When they took it over, I know that we understood the concept of it's the three tax lots, but when they bought it back in the 30s, was your family's understanding that they built the one house in the center in the garage, and they thought they'd be able to develop the two at some point in the future? Yes, my grandfather purchased the lots on either side for the family. Okay. At this time, you're not looking to do the three separate lots, instead you'd rather take the house down and subdivide it into two, again, to be consistent with what's... Right, to be consistent with the master plan of Ocean, yes. Okay, and you still get the three separate tax bills? That's correct, we do. Okay, and you're agreeable as part of any, if the subdivision was approved, you're agreeable to the concept of the, you understand the house needs to come down, the garage needs to come down? Yes. And all of those things. And so you're familiar with the neighborhood. This is, the house that you have there now, it's an older bungalow-style house that's kind of in need of repair? Yeah, like the gentleman said, it was built in 1920, I don't know the exact time. He probably know my family.
Yeah, I know, I lived there once.
You know? I mean, I, you know, I'm sure many of you do. And I know you said back at that time, like, you were telling me the house is like built on logs. Yeah, yeah, the basement has some... For the basement. Shaved trees for beams. So what the plan was now is to take that older home down and put, and again, you're not proposing to build anything, but you would sell the two different lots, because your father's plan is now to subdivide, kind of move out? Yes. And higher at this point? That is correct, yes. Okay. I just, some background for Mr. Garrity, that's all I have for him, if anybody has questions for him. And we've been here a long time, off of West Park Avenue, Garrity Place is, isn't my family? Okay, we sit? Okay, next have Mr. Lurie?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have questions from the public at the end?
I believe so, yes.
Counsel, we're gonna have him start with, right? Okay, let me know when he's ready. Yeah, I understand.
You might want to push it back this way and let, so the public can also see. Yeah, thank you.
Them too. Yeah. There you go.
Mr. Lurie, can you raise your right hand?
You already did. Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Absolutely.
Name for the record?
Name, Tim Lurie, L-U-R-I-E. Mr. Lurie, can you give the board benefit of your background education? Sure. I'm principal at DW Smith. I have both, I have a bachelor's in engineering and master's in engineer from Stevens and Hoboken. I am a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, and certified municipal engineer. I've been appearing in front of planning boards and zoning boards for the last 20 years. I've worked in towns, Tin Falls, Belmar. I'm also one of the engineers for Long Branch, and I've been doing thousands of applications of subdivisions and...
Okay, we'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Tim, can you give, you heard a little bit of the background, could you give, relax for us first, if we'll mark the plan?
Yes.
No, you'll be an A.
I'll mark mine at A1. Do you want to have a revision date on that?
Is it page 422?
423.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
I also have another exhibit, if you want, mark that, just by two.
I'll mark that A2.
A2, good.
I'll mark the other exhibit A2, which is a vicinity map of the R4 zone, which shows the, which shows the subject property and the undersized lots that are surrounding in the zone. All right, Mr. Lurie, can you explain exhibit A1? I have a little overview of what we're proposing. A1 is a minor subdivision plan. It's the, it's lots 7, 8, and 9, Block 904. It's located at the intersection of Dixon and Elm Avenue. The property itself is 160 by 120 feet. As stated earlier, this site consists of three tax lots, 7, 8, and 9, which is shown in the area map on exhibit A1. The property currently exists a one-and-a-half-story dwelling, which exists on Lot 8, with a detached garage, which is located just about on the rear property line. The property currently has sewer, water, and electric that service the site. The property is located in the R4 zone, which has a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet. We are proposing to subdivide the three lots into two lots, a new lot 701 and a new lot 901, which is an interior lot on Dixon Avenue. Lot 701 is a corner lot on Dixon and Elm Avenue. The new, the corner lot 701, we prepared this subdivision to have 701 meet the lot area of 10,000 square feet, and then we have a variance of the width of 83.33 feet along Dixon Avenue, where the zone allows 90 feet. All other setbacks, we meet all other setbacks. Lot 901, which is the interior lot, is 9,200 square feet. It's 800 square feet short, so it's approximately 92% of the lot width for the zone. And in addition, we have a lot width variance for this lot of 76.67 feet, which has, where 90 feet is required. All right, Tim, before we get into the engineering review letters and his comments, why don't we go through the variance request and the justification for the variances? What we're seeking is a C2 variance for the lot width and the lot area, correct? Sure, that's correct. Okay, and for the C2 variances, we're gonna have to show, it relates to the specific piece of property, the purpose of the MLUL would be advanced, variance can be granted without a substantial detriment, the benefit is substantially outweighs that detriment,
and it will not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone. So, um, why don't we first start, as this relates to the property, what goals, or do you believe it meets, would advance the goals in municipal land use law in the ordinance?
Sure, that's, yes. May I may sit down for this part?
Sure.
Thank you. The, uh, stay below, we're requesting a lot width variance for lot seven oh one, and then for a lot width and lot area for lot nine oh one. The, the master plan in nineteen ninety states that this area was called Shadow Lawn Neighborhood. It's a small, isolated neighborhood, surrounded by the R-one zone, where the lot sizes range from six thousand to thirty thousand square feet, with the majority of the lots being eight thousand to fifteen thousand square feet. The, and then according to the ordinance, it states that the R-four zone definition is, purpose is to provide smaller lots to meet the desires of the, to be consistent with the neighborhood. This property is unique because once it was three lots, and it's a corner lot, the lot itself is set by the depth of the block, the rear on both sides is a hundred and twenty feet, so that's why we get limited in setting, where we set this to have the, meet the lot area, but we cannot meet the width as a result of the corner lots, corner, you know, corner lot. The...
Well, Tim, some of the goals in municipal land use law that get advanced, such as the promoting adequate air, light, open space, can you go, go through those factors?
Sure, we could, we go through the positive criteria, which, which one? Refer to A-two, which as you can see on the A-two exhibit, our subject property is shown in green, the two-hundred-foot proximity around, it's the dash black line around the subject property, and in red, you can see in this zone where all the lots that are undersized in this zone. So this lot is created a mix of undersized lots and, and lots that meet the ordinance criteria. Stay below, the R-four zone is in the upper northeast corner and is surrounded by the R-one zone. So as the positive criteria goes, we are, we will have, um, two new, two new houses, which will be an upgrade to the area from eliminating the existing one house, and it promotes a visible environment from the MLUL, and this will also, having the two, two houses there, will provide adequate light and open space, and in addition, we will be eliminating, there's a detached garage on the rear existing, which is a variance condition today, we'll be eliminating that, that variance.
And when you're proposing these new lots, the proposed setbacks, all the setbacks will be met, so the, the separation between the different properties, it's all gonna be in conformance with the standards of the ordinance?
That is correct. Even though we have the lot widths that are a little smaller than what's required by a zone, we still maintain all the, the front side and rear setbacks.
And that helps establish the appropriate population densities and concentrations?
As per the MLUL, yes.
Correct.
Yes, it does.
And this is a more appropriate lot size for this neighborhood based upon, rather than, than a larger lot?
That is correct. As it goes into the, um, the negative criteria, it doesn't, does not negatively affect the neighborhood, if we were to do one lot on here, just to give you an idea, the, the footprint of one lot would be about fifty-two hundred square feet, so you'd have approximately a ten thousand four hundred square foot lot on that house on that corner. So having the two lot, having the two houses there more fits into the character of the neighborhood.
So you think this variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to, to the zone, and it would be more in conformance and analogous to the surrounding properties and similar to those?
That is correct.
Okay, and, um, so in your opinion, does the benefit of granting the variance to help create, uh, appropriate open space, establish some population densities, the visual desire, the, the desirable visual neighborhood, and as well as can meet the goals and intent of the R-four zone?
Yes.
So do those benefits outweigh any detriment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and do you think this, granting this variance will substantially impair the intent of the zone?
No, will not impair the intent of the zone.
Again, for the reasons it's consistent with the size?
Yes.
Based upon the information that the board's planner indicated, that it's, again, appropriate size-wise?
Yes.
In conformance with everything that's out there?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I know, Tim, you talked a little bit about, and I know we've gone through that as a C-two variance, you talked a little bit about a hardship issue, and it really, that depends, not, that goes to not so much as to the lot, uh, size, but to the width, because since the lot's a hundred and twenty feet deep, the, there's enough square footage where, if it was the appropriate, or not, not like I say appropriate, but if it met the minimal requirement of a hundred-foot depth, you could have had, and it was the same square footage, you could have the appropriately with lots, so the, so the, um, lot width variance is, is one of it, is in part is a result from the a hundred and twenty-foot depth, rather than a hundred and twenty.
Based on the, you're set by the block parameter.
Okay.
Yes, and then to, um, just to refer to the planner's letter, we will certainly add the trees to the plan.
You have a, you have a tree line actually shown on the plan right now?
We'll go out and locate the individual trees as he requested, and then, and then at the time of building permit and plot plans, then we can do the individual tree preservation plan.
Okay, and then agree, and again, we've, you spoke into the owner, and the owner's agreeable to the, to the concept that either the house needs to come down first, or a letter of credit would need to be posted before something is filed?
Yes, yep. We can even add as a note onto the plan also.
Okay, with respect to drainage, do you envision that drainage will be an issue here, that you're not gonna be able to meet the requirements, not to, um, create increased flow to the, to the neighboring properties?
Correct. With the drainage, I would, I would, I would request that we take this on individual lot basis, where we could prepare, uh, we could prepare a plan within, for each individual lot to contain its own drainage, and ensure that the grading is done in a way that it doesn't run into, run into adjacent properties, so that we don't have a homeowners association for two lots.
I don't think there's a way around it.
No.
But having said that, what we've done is encourage the design on a common property line of that type of thing that can be expanded, because we don't anticipate, as you threw the number out before, that the initial development, if the board approves it, the initial development would be, you know, over eleven thousand square feet of impervious cover. So, but if someone later wanted to put in a deck of patio or something, they're gonna need to expand their share, but we have a whole way that we've been trying to deal with these. But the state law says you can't put a development, the responsibility for storm management on one homeowner.
Well, in a...
I understand, listen, applicants have taken my reading to DEP, and DEP's come back and said he's...
And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, I got, we got the letter today, so we were just trying to...
Well, it's very, it's something we can talk about, this is what, like I said, this is, that's engineering, and everything in my letter can be solved, I'll state it right out. It's engineering. Throw enough money at it, you can solve it. It's a planning issue. No, really, this is about planning more than it is about engineering.
Yeah, and with that, we were just, and again, I haven't had the benefit of the conversation with the DEP on that, it was our hope that if we did a stormwater management program for each lot, it's, we're not making one homeowner responsible on their zone, they're each gonna be responsible for their own separate lots, so I wasn't sure if that specific issue had been brought up to the DEP or not. If not, we'll deal with the engineer and...
I believe it has to be a homeowners association, unfortunately, that's, that's the law.
Okay, um, we have not run across that issue before, but obviously, if the, if the board's so inclined, if that is a condition, we would, we would address that.
Okay.
So pretty much...
So that's pretty much directly...
That's your, okay, fine. Um, I'd like to probably open this up now to the public, if you would like to be heard, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up, take the microphone, give your name and address, and any comments you may have. Now, please, please try and limit your comments to the testimony that's been given.
And you, you know, you may, you may direct your questions to either Mr. Warrenkin or his professional.
I just really have comments. My name is Kim O'Connell Thurman, I've also lived in Ocean Township, uh, my whole life, and my family has as well, up to a hundred years, and, um, I live at one oh seven Dixon Avenue.
Okay.
Just excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you know, usually we, we bifurcate by having questions first, without the, the members of the public being sworn in, and then at the end, we have comments. Any questions by us first? Uh, we also have that too.
Um, okay, how would you like to proceed?
Well, I, I think since we have our residents up here, if, if we can just have questions at this point, and then at the end, after the board asks questions, then we'll have comments. That's usually...
Okay.
We have both.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can wait, members of the board have questions first. I had some questions. I can wait.
Sure. That's Big John.
Um, one question I have is, um, is there any, is there any restriction we can put on the size of the, um, build, the size of the homes that they put in the different, in the, in those areas? Is there, is there some kind of elevation?
You have a twenty-seven, what is it, twenty-seven percent?
Twenty-seven percent. Coverage is...
Twenty-seven percent.
I was more, I was more, because we're, because we're granting a variance, because it's smaller than the block set is, was really zoned for, are we concerned at all about a building being too high that over umbrellas other buildings in the area? Can we restrict that, or can we make that?
You could. I would say in this instance, you've got one lot that's ten thousand square feet, so it meets the area requirements. You've got the other lot that's eight hundred square feet short of that, so I don't know how that would help you that much. I mean, the ordinance does limit the height, there's limits, height limits in the ordinance, there's setback limits, there's coverage.
Are the, are the height limits, are the height limits that are currently set, are they larger than the current, than the average home that's out there today?
I don't know.
What?
I don't know.
That's, that's hard to say, but I believe the, the height limitation is thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, that's correct.
Right, so, I mean, at this point, thirty-five feet can be a two-story, you could have really high ceilings in there, you could have a peaked roof, but it cannot be higher than thirty-five feet, and what that thirty-five feet means is that the grading up to the front of the structure, that's where the measurement starts.
No, it doesn't, starts at the finished floor.
The first floor elevation.
And that can be three, that can be three feet above the grade.
My, my, so my intent is to, um, if, you know, people who are living in the area don't feel like they're being umbrellaed by some other buildings that are next to them.
When I went through the neighborhood the other day, when I was looking at this application, it would be my estimation is that most of the houses are below that thirty-five feet, probably twenty, between twenty-five and thirty feet.
Right.
So basically, so, so, Sam, I'm asking you, so based on that, are we allowed to restrict the height, or is it not something that we can do to be consistent with the neighborhood?
If you can tie it into the nature of the variances, and in this case, you do have lot width variances, which would tend to, to restrict the, the amount of space you would have on the side of each house. For example, if you had a ninety, ninety-foot wide lot, while the ordinance does limit the side setbacks to ten feet or twenty-five feet for both sides, you probably would, on a ninety-foot lot, have more than that setback on either side. But without going out and measuring what the setbacks are in the neighborhood, what the building heights are, it's very hard for me to come up with the recommendations to the board as to whether you should do that or not.
And from our perspective, the maximum, while it's thirty-five feet, the maximum stories are two stories, and we would, again, it's not a two-and-a-half story, it's a two-story, that's the, the maximum stories that are permitted. We will be meeting all of the setback requirements, we're not asking for any variances with respect to the setbacks. Uh, we are meeting the, for the corner lot, we're meeting the lot area, whereas a seven-foot variance from the lot width and eight hundred square feet for the interior lot, if it's, I think that's, it's ninety-two percent of it, if the, if you wanted to increase the set, the setback on, on that one side, because the one, it's a, it's a, it's a setback to our other lot, if you want to increase it on the other one, it...
You understand, you understand, you understand what we're trying to get to, right?
No, no, I understand.
You drive through some of the neighborhoods, and there's these bigger homes that are overshadowing other homes.
I can tell you, the, the lot that we're talking about, the house, oh, I'm sorry.
The lot that we're speaking about, behind it, there's a retaining wall five, six feet high, and that house behind it is probably forty, fifty feet above, you know, with the height of the house, it had an addition put on, so the new house, even two stories, would still be less than that, they'd be still looking down over the lot that we have.
And without a variance, we could go up to, to the ten feet, um, if, if, without a variance, if we, if they wanted to rebuild that house on there, they could go to ten feet to that side, to the side property line and go to a fifty-one hundred square foot building footprint size to a ten thousand square foot house, and we're not proposing to do that whatsoever, we're trying to be in conformance with the, the, how, the way the neighborhood has been developed, and, and we think what we're proposing is in, is in conformance with the way the, uh, the character of the neighborhood. As I said, it were ninety-two percent of the lot size, it's slightly different, um, for the, for the width, if you wanted to prorate and set the setback there, because right now the setback, it's ten feet on either side or with a twenty-five foot total. If you want to shift it and say, between us, the, the proposed lot seven point oh one and the existing neighborhood, if you want to say, of the twenty-five feet, fifteen feet have to be there on that side, and it's got, and the ten feet on the other side, I think that's something the applicant is okay with, because we've got the twenty-five feet difference, so that way you'll, you'll make that separation, you'll still have the twenty-five foot total side yard setback, but you'll mandate that fifteen feet of that will be, um, to the neighboring property owner. On the other side, it's to the other lot that we're gonna be creating, and then it goes to a corner, a street, so there's no other property there. So it's really only the one property directly, if you're facing the house from Dixon, it's only the one property directly to the right.
Any other comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have four, but quick ones. So in the environmental commission's report, it says there's a township right-of-way, is that true? On the property? Am I reading it correctly? I don't know if we got that.
No, I think they were just talking about the plantings in the right-of-way.
The plantings of the properties of the township right-of-way and the township right-of-way.
What, what, I think what they mean is that the plantings are between the property, front property line and the urban line.
Okay.
So they're in the street right-of-way.
Got it, okay, just, I thought somebody would've said something before if that were the case, all right. Um, have we, and I don't know if anybody's gonna know this, and maybe you guys do, have we granted any other variances in that zone since, for similar changes? I mean, I get that there are pre-existing properties that are...
That neighborhood itself, or is that, that's specific, the Shadow Lawn area?
Right.
I know there've been applications in that neighborhood in the past, I don't, but they're a while ago, and I don't remember what the outcome was.
Okay.
I seem to remember one on Dixon Avenue, going back in early nineties, but I can't rea, I don't think it was, uh, I don't think it was granted, I, for some reason, I thought the applicant may have withdrawn it. Because it was the extreme west, Dixon Avenue's two blocks along to Westerly Block is a dead end. My recollection was right, it was on the south side.
I know there is one on Bryan Avenue.
Right.
And I don't remember what the outcome of that was.
Okay. Um, and then, can somebody explain to me, talking about a firm, a positive reason to do this, population, improving population density? Help me out with that?
An appropriate population density, I think what he's saying, and maybe he can explain it better, is that what's being proposed here is consistent with the lot sizes in the area, so therefore, what's, what's being proposed is an appropriate population density for this neighborhood. The municipal land use law, let me read you the...
Yeah, I'll read it to you, it's under a section E of the definition section for purposes, and it says, "To promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment."
So splitting it up is better than keeping it the same, according to Mueller? Is that, what, I just want to understand the...
By any council...
It's inter-judgment call, as to whether that's the case.
What we're providing is the testimony from our professional planner, that it's his opinion that the subdivision of this lot would be an appropriate population density for this area, because it's consistent with many of the other lots in the area, which...
Not that it's approving or, it, it's not that it's improving it or hurting it, it would be appropriate.
It's just to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, and, and we believe this is an appropriate population density there, based upon the other lots that are in the neighborhood, we've, you've heard testimony from your planner, I think it was thirty-seven percent of the lots are smaller than what we're proposing already in there.
Okay.
So we're just looking to be appropriate.
Just want to understand the term. And then the last one, again, if I heard this correctly, you're not, right now, you're just seeking a, a variance to subdivide the lot, you're not talking about any buildings on it?
Correct.
There's a lot of, a lot of representations that they're not seeking variances for setbacks, but they're also not proposing any construction, so why would they?
But we would agree that we've got to live with the setbacks.
But you don't have any control over the guy that buy, buy the lot, why can't I come in and apply for setback variance?
Correct.
Well, he can come in, yes.
He, he could come in, but you could make as a condition of the resolution, they'd have to come back to, to seek a relief from the resolution of approval and, and to get a variance, but we're not proposing to do that at all right now.
So, right, so the house has the building, we, we shouldn't be taking into any, and no disrespect, we shouldn't be taking any consideration from a building perspective, is that correct or not correct?
It's correct.
Okay.
Why?
Because that...
No, I, no, I, I, I understand, I understand, but if we're making concessions on one end, right, why wouldn't we want to make concessions on another end to figure out how to protect the sanctity of the, of the community?
That's, that's up to the applicant to propose. You can vote on the application before you, you can't make him do something more in the application than he's proposed.
And what we had agreed is, if the concern is with respect to that neighbor, we can agree that the setback for that property line is fifteen...
I'm not, I'm really not concerned about the setback, I'm concerned about what the building looks like in the neigh, what the buildings look like in the neighborhood. So that's the real thing, right, that's fifteen feet or twelve feet or eighteen feet, whether it looks, frankly, whether it looks out of place in the neighborhood, that's really what, that's really what I would be concerned about.
You can put restrictions on what they do, to make it consistent with what's in to make it consistent with what's in the neighborhood. But we don't have that information. I, I couldn't possibly recommend to you, here's the restrictions that make sense. Because I haven't done a study of that entire neighborhood or that immediate surrounding area to see what, what the setbacks are, how tall the buildings are.
Yes, but if we don't do it now, then when he, when he comes to propose, um, we'll be stuck with what the.
I don't disagree with you.
Will we be stuck with what the what the restrictions are in place?
Conforming building that may be bigger than other buildings in the area, it may not.
I think at this point, we're only going to be concerned with the subdivision, that's number one, and whether it's something we're gonna approve.
What he, what, what.
But Sandy, can we, can we, can we join the two?
That's what I, I'm asking the same question in a different way.
Can we join the two?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Okay.
But I think what Jim is saying is that i- if it's thirty-five feet, and if there is a concern by the board, because they are getting a, a variance in situations like that, uh, you can put conditions on approval. But I believe what Jim is saying is that he couldn't tell you if it should be twenty-five feet, or twenty-eight-and-a-half feet, or thirty-two-and-a-half, because i- if you're asking our planner what the average is, he doesn't have a basis, so.
But could.
You would have to either, uh, adjourn this to have a study done, uh, you know, assuming that you would, you know, want to, uh, not vote tonight. Or something like that.
But could we, could we do, could we do something just, um, maybe just even just simple, saying it can't be greater than ten percent of the average homes of the ten average homes around it, or? No, no longer, no bigger than that, or?
Suppose, over the years, those houses are torn down and people build to the ordinance. Then that puts this built at, possibly built out of dis- I mean, it, it is probably better to look at it and see what's there. Make a decision.
Well, let, let me just ask, you, you mentioned something earlier, where you said that you want to put in two lots, but you could also just sell all three and they could put up a mega house.
With, oh, yeah, you could sell, you had to sell the entire parcel.
Right, and then they could put up a seven, ten thousand square foot home there.
That's correct, without having to come to the board whatsoever.
That's correct.
It's a fifty-one-hundred square. Based upon your ordinance, the way it exists now, it's twenty-seven percent of ninety, of nineteen thousand, two hundred, which I think is fifty-one-hundred and change.
Well, it depends, it's twenty-one percent, twenty-seven percent.
Of the buildable area.
Of the buildable lot area, which is seventy-five percent of the total lot area.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Yeah, it's not quite that big.
Okay, but it's still, it'd be.
A five, six thousand square foot home?
Probably seven thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's part of your argument, that, I think their argument is that, uh, if they only had one lot, then they can have a generically called a mega house.
That's gonna be out of place.
Mansion, uh, but an appropriate, uh, size for the population would be two lots, because the, the houses would be generally like the neighborhood.
It would fit better to the character, instead of having, what he could do as of right right now is one mega house. What we're proposing is two smaller houses in conformance with the coverage and setback limits e- existing in the zone. Right now, what we're proposing are two lots which are larger than over the third of the lots right within the area.
So could we, could we say when they came for approval, could we say it had to conform at some, conform to the some standard that's been already set at some level, or?
You're sort of zoning from the bench out there, I mean, you.
What we're saying is it would be conformance with what the, they, they've got to come in, we're, we're we're making the representation that it's gonna be conformance with the setbacks and the buildings, and if they want to do something otherwise, they're gonna have to come back before you, or actually, at that point, probably.
Let me see if I can, I can put it in a different sense. The attorney's saying that if they keep it as one, first of all, it's two lots, it's merged for land use purposes into one parcel, as Jim pointed, that's the land use laws done that, so they can't sell off the two lots on the side or, or come in for building permits, it's one, one piece. The attorney's saying, okay, we're allowed twenty-seven percent of lot, buildable lot area, so that's so many square feet. Well, you are, whether you put it in one structure or two. So if I live around the corner and I'm looking at that much roof, whether it be one or two, it's, it may or may not look that much different to me. I, I think that what Jim pointed out is a lot areas, one makes it, one is eight-hundred square feet short. Counsel's pointing out that, you know, if you're concerned about impact, we'll accept the restriction, sort of makes sense, that if you have a minimum setback of twenty-five feet and a requirement for mi- of twenty-five, put a minimum of fifteen on the property, on the sideline, that abuts a different property outside the, that sort of makes some sense. That will help your concern to some degree. I'm not sure how you limit height, because
Yeah.
if you, this guy builds two houses to a limited height and everyone around him over time raises it, then it's sort of not a
And as far as the impact to the rear, these lots are deeper than the zone requires.
Right.
And people tend to put the houses towards the front of the lot, because they want the bigger rear, rear yard, so there's not gonna be the impact to the rear. Uh, a house on the lot as it exists now, to be conforming to the lot coverage, could be three thousand eight-hundred eighty-eight square feet of footprint.
So it's a seven thousand.
The ten thousand square foot lot could have a house with a maximum one thousand nine-hundred eighty-four square foot footprint. And the other lot would be a little bit smaller now, probably about one thousand eight-hundred square feet roughly.
And along those lines, the difference between a mega house and the two smaller houses, uh, it's the two smaller houses, because you're broke up between the setbacks, it's gonna break up the roof line. And I, and I can't let my engineer testify to that, that's gonna have a less of a visual impact to the neighborhoods, two smaller houses, even if the square footage is the same, because the roof line is broken up, rather than one massive.
Hey, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I, I think I still may have a question, but before we start to fine-tune this, I, I think we should open this up to the public to see you know, what, what the neighborhood concerns, if any, might be.
I just have one question though, before we do that. Speaking of these mega houses, what would, or what would happen if there were, was approved for two separate lots? And someone came in and bought the two lots?
And did it anyway.
And did it anyway, and made one mega mansion. Is there any?
Nothing's stopping it.
The question, the question there is, and we have one actually that's in progress right now, that I know Ron's office is trying to, is struggling to try to handle it, is if they do that, they have to come back to the board to combine the two lots. I don't think they would, but I, I'm not certain of that.
I'm pretty certain that a.
As long as they're within the footprint of.
A consolidation is not a subdivision.
Here's a question, can we say that if we divide these into two lots, they cannot be combined again?
No, I mean, what, what?
Can't do that.
Consolidation is not a subdivision, under the law. They don't have to come to you to buy properties and consolidate.
All right.
Unless there's variances involved, I'm sorry, I mean, got you, unless there's variances involved. But these are two lots, one of which is totally conforming, the other which is almost as the area. Dimensions aren't terrible, if you combine them, it would be a conforming lot as.
And I think the applicant would consent to a deed restriction, that they're not gonna be re- recombined, so you'd sell it off as two separate lots.
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
That would control it?
Yes. Yeah, because an applicant can stipulate to certain conditions that otherwise under the law wouldn't be mandated.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I, I think that.
Wait, I have, I have two quick questions. If we, if they were to not do a deed restriction, wouldn't the requirement that they do the joint stormwater management hinder recombining the lots?
No.
Well, no, because then it would only be one lot doing its own stormwater management.
Okay. Uh, and the second question was just for my, my own education, of the, the twenty-four lots within the two hundred that were identified as undersized, how many of those currently have structures on them? Versus, how, I mean, how many are actual housing lots versus vacant lots, like?
Everyone.
And I think that's shown on our exhibit eight, too.
I'm, I'm a little blind, I, I can't see it all.
If you want us, we can run through the, the.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, because over here, it doesn't show structures, anything on, on Alpern. It just shows lots, but.
Yeah, if you look down here, there's nothing on the.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So what's the red?
Tim, why don't you speak into the microphone so the person can hear you? I'll hold this up and you.
Make sure the members of the public know.
I'm referring to exhibit eight-two. And the red, the red, as stated below, the green is our proposed two lots. The red is the undersized lots, and you can see, we, we, we superimpose the tax map over the latest Google Earth image, so you can see the structures that are underneath the the properties in red.
Do you have, you wish, I'll show the audience the same thing.
Yeah. Tim, why don't you walk a little back?
Explain the same thing, so that we're on the same page.
So then are, are lots, current lots, seven and nine, the only two vacant lots?
Well, there's a house there.
Well, well, no, there's, there's a house on lot eight.
It's for tax purposes.
Right, okay.
Development purposes, for zoning purposes, those lots don't exist, it's one big lot.
Okay.
And pretty much everything over there is developed.
I think Sandy, I think.
For some reason, tax purposes, they weren't combined on the tax box.
All right, I think we should, uh, open this up to questions from the audience, uh, based on the testimony that you've heard so far. Okay, so, ma'am, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Chairman, I just want to note that we are approaching an hour, but the study is up.
Okay. I think we can wave that. Please.
My name is Shirley Fish. I live at two-four-three Alpern Avenue, which is the property that backs on the area in question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the question I have is just, if the people who own the current home on that property are not planning on doing the redevelopment themselves, which is what I think I understood, then why does it matter to them whether it's subdivided or not? Why aren't they just selling their property and then leaving it up to whoever chooses to buy it? Whether they buy it and subdivide it into two lots and appeal to the board, or whether they choose to build one house on it? It sounds like they're trying to preserve something in the neighborhood that they're leaving, and I'm not understanding why this is part of their application at all, and if we have addressed that if it's sold separately, it could be recombined, then why isn't that just up to the buyer of the lot? Why does it need to be subdivided now at all?
Counsel, you can have your witness, uh, answer that, or you can.
Mr. Gary.
Be on behalf of your client.
Um, I will answer my behalf of my client. It's, it's our, our right to do so, if they want to maximize the value of having two lots rather than one, uh, but it's obviously within their right, they can make an application to the board.
Okay. Any other questions?
And for the record, after the survey, up to the moment.
For the record, the, the lady that was just up here, for, for the record, her fence is on my property.
We couldn't put a statement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Rogers. I reside at one-eleven Dixon Avenue in the neighborhood. Uh, I've been in the neighborhood about seventeen years, but I actually had a question, uh, from Mr. Higgins. Um, can you describe what the purpose of the current ordinance is for a ninety-foot width and a ten-thousand-foot square foot requirement for the?
Yeah, the purpose is that, in the R-four zone, there are numerous areas throughout the township that are zoned R-four. And the predominance of lots in those areas are ten-thousand square foot lots with widths that are ninety feet or more. So that the predominance of lots in the R-four zone throughout the township, it does, has that requirement, not that requirement, that's what exists. And the, uh, the municipal land use law, one of its requirements is that zoning give reasonable consideration to the character of an area. So if the character of an area is, is such where the predominant number of lots are ten-thousand square feet and have a ninety-foot width, that the zoning should have those standards in it. It shouldn't say that they should be twenty-thousand square foot lots and two-hundred foot width.
And, and the application in question, the property as it resides now for land use purposes, fully complies with that requirement?
The property fully complies with that requirement, that's correct.
Okay, and of the structures in the two-hundred, uh, foot catchment zone?
Yes.
What is the percentage of the properties that comply with that requirement?
The percentage is about, uh, sixty-three percent, roughly.
So, so most of them do?
Yeah, yeah. But again, too, when the applicant's expert testified, he did go through the purposes of that zone, and the purposes were that there be, uh, smaller lots that are, provide a, a, a range of affordability, basically.
Right.
To, to a certain segment of the population.
But there are other properties, again, as you alluded to in your report, that, that have a fifty-foot frontage that would, that would meet that zone, so really.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, and I was pointing that out, because I think generally, what's being proposed here, I think is out of character with this neighborhood. So when, when you look at the negative impact, I don't think there's a substantial negative impact.
You say there's no substantial negative impact, and yet you say what is being proposed is out of character?
No, I say, it's not out of character.
Not out of character, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Now.
It's not out of character.
David Donald Trump.
Now, for, because this is a corner property, for those structures that are around the, the applicant's parcel, how many of those, either adjacent or abutting, are non-conforming?
Non-conforming?
I think it's in your report.
I've got, I've got that.
Yeah.
You can save us the trouble if you know the answer.
Immediately abutting?
Or, or adjacent to, yeah.
Adjacent to, one, let's see, one, two, there are only three properties that directly abut the subject property. Two of the three are substantially non-conforming.
So in effect, then, this would be adding an additional non-conforming lot to that same space?
One, yeah, one, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
And you have one directly across the street, also across Dixon, that's substantially non-conforming.
So that would be yet another one?
Yes.
All at the end of the, of the street?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and Mr. Laurie, when you testified, if I can move on to, Mr. Chairman, just a question, Mr. Laurie. You testified about the statutory goals of the MLUL and, and the application for the board. It sounds to me, though, from the testimony we heard just from Mr. Higgins, that as the application is today, as the property is today, he could develop it, it's, there's other properties in the area with nearly the same square footage, one is the woman who just testified behind.
And he also said that breaking this into the two lots isn't, sorry. Breaking, combining this into two lots versus one lot isn't conformance with the neighborhood, so he's also agreeing that.
Okay. And ju- and just one final question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Is it, and I don't know if this is to the board or to one of the professionals, is it, is it the role of the planning board to promote non-conforming structures, or, or, or?
No, it's not, it's not a role. Uh, I, it's, it's, we take a look at each, each case individually. Uh, we listen to your testimony, the testimony of the professionals, uh, any comments by the public, and we try to make the best decision that we can. Uh, I don't believe that we're, we're looking to approve a non-conforming site. Um, I, I believe that you're talking about a ten-thousand square foot and a ninety-two-hundred square foot, uh, lot, I mean, it's eight-hundred feet short of the requirement, um, whether, I don't know whether that's, you know, detrimental or not, um.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could just add to that a, a bit, so, a- a- as you have heard, this applicant is asking for variances, and therefore, by the very nature of the law, it's called the MLUL,
there are criteria by which the board has to consider whether or not the variances, uh, you know, satisfy
the positive and negative criterias that the planner talked about and Jim Higgins talked about. So to, to say promoting non-conformance, I, I would suggest, that's not really the test. It's whether or not the positive, negative criteria have been proven.
Okay. And I guess just a final question, and again, I don't know if this is to you, Mr. Higgins, so I've heard the board talk a lot tonight about conditions that they may put, presumably on the approval of the application. But how does that impact the purchaser of the property? The applicant's testified that their, their goal here is to subdivide the lot to maximize their financial value as they leave the area. How does that prohibit a builder, as we've talked about tonight, from buying the, either the one large lot or conditions on two lots? Uh, won't we be back in front of you folks or the zoning board again, if they apply for additional variances to try and expand the footprint of the lot?
So, um, you know, if the board voted to approve, uh, without any conditions, uh, then, uh, you know, any, any purchaser can do whatever they, they want to under the zoning, okay? Putting the, the height and the like. If the board approved it subject to certain conditions, we don't know what that would be, do we, but just look at, uh. Oh, but he's not here now. But, where'd he go? So i- if they added Mr. Fitzgerald's conditions, then, uh, if I answer your question, uh, any, uh, any condition in the resolution must be met. So whether or not it's this applicant here, or subsequent owner, or contract purchaser, they'd have to, to comply with that. I don't know if that answers your question.
It kind of does, but I guess put another way, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, Mr. Brown, but if, if there's a condition that is not put in, the applicant, the, the, then, then someone else could come before, the zoning board or others, to. the applicant, the, the, then, then someone else could come before the zoning board or others to, to seek an additional variance.
Yeah, and I think that's been made clear, I think.
I just wanted to understand, because it was a little, little confusing out there hearing what was going on for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions. I can wait till the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard?
No questions.
Comments that have questions.
Question?
Comments will be coming up.
Can you, uh?
Name and address, please?
Lu Conti, 239 Dixon.
Can you lower the mic so we can hear you?
Oh, that hurt. Thank you, Rob. Two thirty-nine Dixon. Yeah. We're directly across the street from the Garrities. We actually built the house that the Fishes purchased from. There's not a five-foot retaining wall. It's about three feet. And the height of the house is less than thirty feet. I know because we built it, my wife and I. We had a very similar situation and elected to build one moderate-sized house that fit that lot beautifully. So we keep talking about appropriate size for this neighborhood.
Mr. Higgins is clarifying that, it sounds like you're getting to comments.
No, 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 I made a statement. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, now that's, this is part of my question.
You're just supposed to ask questions.
So we've asked, well, I wanted to make a statement just so you understood my question. We keep referring to appropriate size for the neighborhood and these existing undersized homes. You had referred to one lot that, these are both non-conforming lots. This isn't one non-conforming lot. They're both non-conforming. So my question to the board is, what, how far do we go with this? Because although?
Excuse me. Uh, you know, there's a, a question before about whether or not something should be directed to the board. Just to clarify this, these are only questions that are supposed to be directed to our two witnesses.
Okay, that's fine. So this is not a hardship, obviously, for any, this particular site wouldn't be a hardship. But one by one in this neighborhood, as that happens, it will be a hardship to the neighborhood. So I guess then, in speaking, he was speaking to you, I guess I can't. But my question really is, how far do we go with this? There's many non-conforming lots.
Who's your question directed to?
Well, I didn't realize it was directed to them. That wasn't what we stated initially. It was the comments. And if we're not at the comments section, then go sit back down.
Questions.
That's the problem. We're not at the comment. We're, we're gonna get to that really soon, but.
Well, my question was directed to the board because so, we were asking, if we're not then, we're just asking these of them, then I'll, I'll sit back down.
Yeah.
I have questions directly for the board and directly for the, the variances that are being applied for. And how does that pertain to the rest of the neighborhood?
You can ask questions to the board.
Okay. Can I do that now?
Sure.
Okay. So we also live on a lot that has multiple parcels and, and are, there's many lots in the neighborhood that are like that. Since we're asking for two non-conforming lots, my question is, who else comes before the board and, and how far do we go? Just from my own understanding, how far do we allow variances to go? What are, what are some of the ordinances for? And why do we have variances? Why do we allow them? And how far are we, will, will the board go on those variances?
And again, I'm just gonna object to this. The, the, the questions are supposed to be with respect to the application that's been presented. And this is going well beyond that.
Agreed.
And while we, we.
Agreed.
Agree.
Agreed.
They can comment. It's really inappropriate.
You, you will, you will.
Can I make a clarification that may help solve?
Sure, Mr. Higgins. Go ahead.
Okay. The applicant is requesting variances. The law requires that for the board to grant those variances, the applicant has to make certain proofs. The proofs have to be that there have to be a positive planning reasons, not financial reasons, planning reasons, why the variances should be granted. And those planning reasons could either be there's a hardship associated with the shape of the lot, the size of the lot, or that the benefits of granting the variances, which means it advances certain purposes of the municipal land use law, those benefits outweigh the detriments. You then have, he then has to look at what are the detriments, potential detriments or detriments from the, that would result as the granting of the variance. And the board has to balance the two. And if the detriments are substantial, the board should not approve the application. If the benefits are substantially outweigh the detriments, then they should approve it. So as far as saying how far you should go, it's the balancing test. And it's at this application, it's not anything that might happen on another lot anywhere else in this neighborhood. It's what's happening on this lot and what exists in the neighborhood. And the board has to look at all that information and balance it.
Any other questions? Please. Your name and address, please.
Mike Schwab, 258 Dixon Avenue. We actually did have the house that came, I guess it was twelve, thirteen years ago, for a variance, which was denied, but that's a different story. Do we, does anyone look at other factors in the neighborhood? And the difference between one house on one property and two houses on two property and what that brings with it? The number of people, the number of vehicles, et cetera, that are parking on the street, et cetera. Because our reality is we're now in a renters' neighborhood with six-month of college students and tons of cars, and six-month of summer residence with tons of cars, all on the streets. Can't drive down the street without stopping if someone's coming the other way. So with either you guys, I'm not sure who, who that question goes to. But do they look at the big picture for our neighborhood? That's my question.
Who are you asking this question to?
Whoever you feel is appropriate to go towards. I'm not sure the lawyer will answer that, but.
I'd say we provided our testimony from a professional planner. He went through what we believe the goals of municipal land use law that we're advancing. Went through what we thought were negative impacts, which we don't believe were any, which I believe your planner confirmed with. We presented our case with respect to that, and, and I believe we've got our proofs with that. So I don't know if that answers his question, but that's where we are.
Perhaps it was more in the comment section, but I don't know if someone had. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions of the testimony that's been given tonight, we'll close this portion of the application.
Counsel, you have no other witnesses. Is that correct?
At this time, I'd like to just reserve the right to reopen if in fact something comes up in the public comment.
Okay, no problem. I think we can open it up to questions now. I mean, I said comment, I'm sorry.
In which case, people will be sworn in.
Right.
No.
Anyone with any comments?
I have a picture.
Well, one second. Come forward. Okay, no, no, to the microphone. Your name and address.
Kim O'Connell Thurman, 107 Dixon Avenue.
Now you have to be sworn in.
Okay.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? So hope you got it.
I do.
Now, I, I know you're gonna show something on your iPad, but the problem, you're gonna have to.
It's Dixon Avenue. It's the, it's, shows you the property and the parking right now, currently.
But the problem for evidence purposes, you have to leave a document.
Okay.
Can that be done?
It was just a picture of the street that I brought this way. I thought it would be easier, but it's a problem.
Yeah, unless, but we can't, there's no way for us to mark it and put it into evidence. Sorry.
So first, I just want to say we welcome all new people to the neighborhood. And we have thirty-two people that signed a petition in the neighborhood against subdividing these two lots.
Excuse me, I know, I know counsel's looking to me because he wants, what do you want to say, counsel?
I'm gonna be objecting to a petition coming in.
Why is that?
Because I'm not the people on here that I can cross-examine them.
And what's your basis for saying that, under the law? You don't have to cite, is there, are you aware of prohibitions of?
Yeah, in the case law, the prohibition is about presenting a petition without the people here with the ability to cross-examine them.
And, and counsel is correct that there's a whole body of case law.
I can have lots of other comments.
I have a question. How many were up there?
Thirty-two.
And again.
So these were neighbors that signed a petition throughout the small neighborhood. Many of these neighbors are all concerned.
I'm just gonna object to any reference to petition. They're not allowed to present it.
That won't be considered by the board. It can't be.
So with these thirty-two individuals, they sign this?
Excuse me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I, I hate to be technical, but counsel is gonna object again.
So there were other people that were concerned in the neighborhood?
And again, with hearsay, with other people's concern.
I'm very happy to listen to the comments. She's got it with respect to her opinions, but it's not appropriate to testify to one of the people.
The bottom line is that we're concerned about our quality of life in this neighborhood and on this street. This very small street on Dixon Avenue that goes onto Elm. Currently, there are negative quality of life issues on Dixon Avenue and Elm Avenue due to new construction and renters. This is currently already occurring. There are issues with safety on bicycles for children where you can't see due to the large amount of parking on these corners. There are blind spots due to a lot of renting and a lot of cars parked in the street. It's challenging for first responders to get down the streets. It's challenging for snowplows to get down the streets. This is currently occurring. Renters and any new additional homes will cause less room for parking and increase the safety risk that already exists on this street and around where they would like to subdivide the two lots. There's already congestion with these two homes would bring increased noise with the increased number of homes, potential number of individual renters, renters, which tends to come six to eight cars with renters in each of the homes. Currently, right now, that what's going on in the street, as I mentioned, there is increased garbage currently occurring on Dixon Avenue with a lot of oversight required by the Township of Ocean to address the ongoing multiple violations that are occurring that are documented and have been discussed with the mayor.
And again, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not sure what that has, impact that has on our application.
It affects the quality of life to the people that are already living there, that are already facing these issues.
I'd suggest that you wait to have the witness finish, and then you can follow up.
The, my point is that it's already, we already have quality of life issues on this street, on that corner. It's a very small street. It's a beautiful dead-end street. And the township's already aware of it. The mayor's already aware of it. We met with Mayor Siciliano. He's aware of it. I think that's it. I don't like. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, the driveways. One other question was, and perhaps you wouldn't know this yet, but where, where would there be driveways for the additional parking of these two additional houses if that was to happen?
That, that, that's something to be determined much later on when somebody decides to put an application.
Requires two, so if they, if the subdivision were approved, and so there's two building lots, so someone buys and wants, wants to build a house on one, the ordinance requires two onsite on lot, not onsite, not on street, on lot. Parking stalls, minimum.
And there's actually a state regulation that requires, I think, two point five.
Our size.
What?
Our size.
Yeah. Do you want to explain what that is?
Residential site improvement standards is regulations that the, the state has put together where any residential improvements have to meet certain guidelines. And part of that is the off-street parking, which obviously any application that would go forward for, for, for the houses, when they come in for a house, that would meet that requirement.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Frank Thurman, 107 Dixon Avenue, right to the, as you're facing, to the left of the proposed lots. And I have a couple of statements.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you're gonna have a comment, right? So would you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth. So hope you got it.
So hope you got it, yes.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of comments. Uh, I'm a simple man. I teach my kids to do the right thing. And let's get to the bottom of this. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not, whatever your expertise is, it's nice to hear. First of all, I'm gonna say I'm proud of my non-conforming lot. And to me, it, it makes no difference if it's non-conforming now or not. So that makes no difference to me because back in nineteen twenty-six, they were giving lots out. So my lot, according to the township, is conforming because it goes back to nineteen twenty-six. So that picture means.
It's grandfathered.
That's exactly right.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm tired of hearing about non-conforming lots, and I'm one of them. It's not non-conforming. It's conforming to when it back, went back to nineteen twenty-six. So that picture to me is O V E.
Your comment?
That's my comment. Thank you. So getting back to teaching my kids to do the right thing, that's what this is about, really. When I bought my house in nineteen ninety-six, I did research to make sure that the lot next to me was not buildable on it. And it, it was, it was told to me that it wasn't. So we put our hard-earned money into buying that. Now they want to come in with not only one variance, but several variances. But the biggest one that sticks out to me is my friend got turned down, probably for about an eight-foot variance. And now you're looking at an eight percent variance. Eight hundred square feet to me is, according to the letter, was minor subdivision. To me, that's huge. I mean, the question was raised before, what's gonna stop anyone else in my neighborhood, in myself? You're gonna turn everyone down, but you're gonna allow some that have an eight percent variance? I'm not an expert, but to me, that's a huge amount, not a minor subdivision. And one of the things we've heard, there is no emergency or health issue that, that plays a part into this. So the bottom line is money. We all know that's money. And like my wife had said, we have many quality of life issues that could happen with two versus one. I mean, we'd be more than happy with one house versus two. I mean, you have potential light pollution. Who, you know, what are we gonna say? What are they gonna build out lights for, you know? We don't have light pollution now. The drainage, which is a great issue. I have concerns you're building two huge lots and you're gonna have to dig down deep. I mean, what's that gonna do for my, my property? And we don't know who's, what they're gonna do. We can't make assumptions that they're just gonna sell this lot and let it sit there. We all know they're gonna build houses. So that comes with a lot of quality of life. We've had renters, like my wife said, with broken glass, drugs. You bring drugs into the neighborhood. And one other point I want to make is, it sounds funny to me, and I'm not a lawyer, but when we say about, there's no detriment to building two houses, isn't that in the eye of the beholder? How can we as a group make that statement in any documentation that says, oh, it's not a detriment? Well, of course, it's a detriment to the people that live beside them. So I mean, that, that statement was, been flying out here tonight. I don't understand. That's in the eye of the beho, the beholder, not just, that shouldn't be a blasé statement, oh, there's no detriment. Of course, there's detriments. And one other thing that I'd like to bring up. When it was sent around in the letter, which you have in, in evidence, it was said they want to go from three lots to two. And we all know it's not going from three lots to two. There's only one buildable lot. And I, and in my opinion, if you pass this variance, you're gonna see several other people come in for variances in our neighborhood for approval. And I think that is gonna be another quality of life issue. And my friend got turned down for eight feet.
In this neighborhood?
Oh, absolutely. You're gonna see.
Oh, I, I, I want, because you've made a statement, but it's.
In my opinion.
No, wait a minute. You think he got turned down for eight feet?
We did.
Well, he did. He did get turned down.
You can ask him right here.
We just wanted to fit a kitchen table in that.
Excuse me. Here's the problem with the, the recording, so you have to come up and.
All right.
And for the record, for the record, Mike Schwab Dixon Avenue. No, we did apply because we wanted to.
You have to be sworn in.
Raise your right hand, please. Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth. Hope you got it.
I do.
Thanks.
Uh, just, just for effect, yes, we did apply the house. It was, we did not build the house. There wasn't a variance by the builder. He got a variance to build the house. So we asked for an extension on this variance to blow out the. Just to blow out one wall out the kitchen for eight feet, just to add a table. Correct. And we were told at the time that it was not good for the neighbors, that that would not be pleasing for the neighbors, so we were denied. So again, that was, I think it was thirteen years ago. It's going back past ten years.
Well, it was definitely somewhere since nineteen ninety-five. I sort of know that.
But, but to that.
Your lot is undersized or not?
Uh, our builder, I believe, again, we didn't build it. We bought it later.
The lot, the lot, forget that.
The lot is undersized. The lot is undersized.
Do you know the dimensions of it roughly?
I don't. I apologize. Two fifty-eight Dixon Avenue.
Again, as we're going into an application that's not in front of the board, that I don't think is really relevant to the board, and we're not, we don't know what all the facts or the circumstances were. What I'm hearing is they had an undersized lot. They, they were looking for a setback variance. We're not seeking a setback variance here. We're saying we're gonna conform with all the setbacks. While we want to be good neighbors and, and let the neighbors have their say, at some point, I don't want the board to go too far afield, and I'd really like to just keep to the facts that are relevant here.
Counsel, wouldn't you want to know what the size of his lot is, though?
And, and the size of your lot?
I, I don't want to give you, alls I know is that when the build, the builder had to get a variance because of the small lot to build the house on it.
So the builder did get a variance, so you actually got a variance to build your house.
No, I did not. No, I did not.
No, I did not.
Your builder did that.
It was not my builder. I, I bought a house that was there.
Builder got a lot to build the variance, got a variance to build the house you live in.
I, and this is a comment section, I was told. My comment is that I was denied because one of my children had to get up off the table and open the sliding door if the dog wanted to get out, and we just wanted a table where we didn't have to do that. And the reason we were denied, and this is just fact, is that it was not good for the neighborhood as an umbrella statement. It was already a variance on the house, and that's just was our reality, and that was, that was what it was.
I'm just not sure what, what relevance that has, because that application's different than this application. But again, what I'm hearing is they had an undersized lot. A variance was granted for an undersized lot to build something. They wanted to get a second variance to make it more non-conforming, and that was denied, which actually thinks helps this board. And, and what you're saying is, because the question everybody's had here is, well, if you get a variance to build these houses, how do I know I'm protected if somebody wants to come in to get a setback variance? Because you said you're gonna comply with all those. Well, based upon what you're indicating, that, that wasn't granted in the past. So we believe, again, every application to have to be heard on its own merits. But, but again, that goes right against, right to the, the issue that people have been raising, what happens? Here's what you're saying, in the past, if their variance was granted, they didn't give a second variance.
Yes, I believe, Mr. Warren, can, my guess is that the variance that was not given was done by the Board of Adjustment, not by the Planning Board.
Correct. But again, it's.
My, my, my. I guess I just asked the board to consider that, and again, this was more than 10 years ago. I don't know the exact date, so I understand that. But, but the concern of the board was the neighbors. And we were just pushing back a little bit. And I asked the, I just asked the board to consider that if you're doubling houses and doubling everything that comes with them and doubling people and cars, et cetera, that you also consider us as the neighbors and how that affects us. That's just all I ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the last thing I have to say basically on this is.
Just for the record, can you say your name again?
My name's Frank Thurman.
No, I just, I, I understand who you are.
No, I was gonna say, maybe, do we want to see if someone else wants to? Because I know you've, you've spent some time up here.
Well, no, I'm not done yet.
Yes, but, but I'm telling you that there may be other people that would like to, and I'll give you an opportunity after they've.
One last thing. All I'm saying, all I'm asking the board is do the right thing. Eight percent variance is a large variance, and that's not even done. We're not even done with that. That's just the one variance they're looking for. They're gonna have to come in, from what I've heard, and probably look for some more variances. So I'm just asking the board to do the right thing.
I'm not sure where that came from, but we have.
I'm not sure either, but thank you. We'll, we'll take that under consideration. Is there anyone else? Your name and address, ma'am?
Yep, my name's Holly Conti. I live across the street on 239 Dixon.
Right in.
Probably tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth. So have you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
We've lived in the neighborhood for quite a few years. We built a home that was, we bought property that also was a larger lot. And we were very considerate of the neighbors, the integrity. We actually worked with an architect and drove around the neighborhood to make sure that the architecture of the home structurally was pleasing and matched the neighborhood. We didn't build a huge home. We chose not to go for a variance and to subdivide, because we choose to try to be good neighbors as well. We love the neighborhood so much, we bought another lot. It's also very large. And we renovated the house that's there, and we live there because we love the neighborhood. We love the fact that it has very different architecture, all different sized lots. But what's happening to, to me, what I'm, my fear is, is that once this variance gets passed, what's to stop the next person to, you know, come before the board? But I guess that's within everyone's legal right to do that if they own a home, to come and ask for a variance and to build two houses where, you know, there used to be one. It, it does have a negative impact, in my opinion, from living there. There are gonna be more cars, more people. And also, I guess we'll have to, you know, consider going forward, getting legal advice about the fact that people are moving in. We don't know if these people whomever buy these lots are going to build houses that they're then gonna rent out, because now that's what's happening around us is our houses are, we're being surrounded by people that rent all the time. And so there's people coming and going that you don't know. So it's just very uncomfortable for us, and I just wanted to have that put on the record as my say. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a comment?
Chairman, can I ask a question on the comment? Not to her, but to the.
In general?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm looking at, so a couple of people have made comments about if we approve, bear with me, counsel, if we approve this, that there might be future requests coming in for variances to split lots. I'm looking at the map, and if this is appropriate, I only see one other lot that could even be split. Right? I mean, you'd still have to meet close to the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was, I was just doing the same thing as you, just before you asked your question, and I'd see.
My lot.
One other lot. It's actually, yeah, I get Bill's old lot. But, but even that one, the frontage is only 150 feet.
Right.
So it would be a lot less in terms of lot area and lot frontage than what's being proposed here. And, and the other thing is that every application does stand on.
Agreed, agreed.
And, and just, just, I'm assuming we can't put any restrictions on people, on people being able to buy something and rent it out, because that's the, that's, that's the community. That's a different issue. Right, that's, right. So we can't even trust that, right? Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Rogers. I'm at 111 Dixon Avenue.
Yes, I promise to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but truth.
I do, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, and I'd like to thank the applicants this evening for your attention. I'd like to thank the Garrities. Believe me, it gives me no pleasure, and I'm sure for my neighbors too, to come in and oppose this application. The Garrities has been longtime residents of, of the neighborhood, as you've heard here tonight. But I think for myself and several other people, with regards to this particular application, we just don't think it's, it should be granted, because the lot is in conformance now. Recognize that what you're looking to do is take a lot that is complete conformance, as, as the applicant has testified to. They could build one heck of a big house here, right? Within the setbacks, and there's not much we can do about it. What you're looking to do, though, is take a lot that is in complete conformance and promote non-conformity when 63% of the structures in the catchment area are in conformance. That doesn't seem to make sense to me. That's not really the purpose of having the 90-foot width requirement or the 10,000-square-foot buildable requirement. That should be the only thing that's discussed here today. I appreciate the concerns that everyone have raised, and I appreciate the applicant's concern, that they're looking to maximize the benefit out of their land. Again, they've been great neighbors. I hate to do this, but there's really no reason to take that street and put an additional non-conforming lot when there's already three. There's only eight houses on that section of the street. Three are already non-conforming. What you're being asked to do is add two. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. It's not a question of whether the applicant can't develop this land, sell the land. He can do a great deal with this property, as you've heard here tonight. He's even gone forth and said that he has no intention of being the developer. What you're really being asked for today is to allow the subdivision so that someone down the line can come and develop the property. In either case, though, everyone has stipulated, and I think it's included in Mr. Higgins' report, that the existing structure is gonna be gone. So the neighborhood is gonna change. There's no question about that, from everyone's standpoint here tonight. The question before the board, though, is whether it really makes sense to create additional non-conforming properties, when the salutary purpose of the ordinance is to have 90-foot width and 10,000-square-foot requirements. Doesn't seem to make sense. When you add, again, the number of properties on that street, there really doesn't seem to be a reason to, to add additional non-conforming lots. And just a final thing, you know, again, it's a large property, but there are other large properties in the shadow lawn section. You could very, it, it's not like this property is out of place. I could appreciate, in some of the other surrounding areas where you have some of the farms, you could subdivide some of those on the other side of the shadow lawn. And maybe some of those parcels are too big for the neighborhood. That's not the case with the applicant's property. They could very easily develop it, as we've talked about here tonight, the way it is. So again, from my perspective, I'd just like to thank you for your attention. But again, I don't agree that there's a need. And I, and I also don't agree, just briefly, with Mr. Higgins' comment that, excuse me, that there really is no impact. The fact that there are other nine out of 24 that are non-conforming, I don't know if that means that you should add two more. So again, thank you for attention. I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Counsel, do you have any other testimony?
Uh, no, just to sum up at this point.
All right.
All right, I, I don't have any further testimony. Not with.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Again, just in, as Mr. Laurie has testified to, we believe we meet the C2 variance criteria. We had just heard about the purposes. The purposes, I'm gonna read ordinance section 21-26, which is the purpose of the R4 zone where this property is, is to provide for smaller lot sizes to meet the desire of a certain segment of the population who need and desire lower-cost housing and to zone the area in conformance with the existing lot sizes. That's one of the, the, the things that Mr. Laurie has testified to, to provide that what we're proposing, these two lots meet that goal of that ordinance section. We also meet the, the various goals of the municipal, municipal land use law, which are also incorporated into your, into your zoning ordinance, that it promotes the adequate life, air, light, open space. It's getting rid of an existing variance condition with the one garage right along the back of the property. It establishes the appropriate population densities, that we believe these two smaller lots are more appropriate with two smaller houses than one larger house here. We believe by taking out the older house and creating two newer houses, it's gonna promote desirable visual impact in the neighborhood. So we believe we meet the goals of the municipal land use law and the justification for the variance when you take a look at it against the detriments. Your own planner, Mr. Higgins, has indicated he don't, he does not believe that there's a detriment to the, to the zone with this, to the zone or to the character of the neighborhood with the proposed application. And when you weigh the benefits and the detriments, it comes out on the side that the positive benefits of granting the variance outweigh any of the proposed detriments, and you can do it without impairing the intent of the zone and that the variance should be granted. Mr. Laurie also testified, even though we, we focused on the C2, with respect to the lot width, the, there's a hardship variance, there's a hardship argument that justifies the lot width variances granted because of the depth of the lot. The lot size is 19,200 square feet, but it's 120 feet deep. If, in fact, you had 100, the 19,200-square-foot lot with only 100-foot depth, which is the minimum in the ordinance, we could have easily have met the requirements for the lot, for the lot width. So that goes to, and that's specific to the, to the shape of the property and is a specific hardship to this property as to why the lot width cannot be met. But the, the one lot still meets the square footage, the other lot does not. We've heard a lot of the comments from the neighborhood, and, and I, and I understand, and the applicant is not looking to be a quote-unquote bad neighbor. I understand some of these issues have to do with rental properties in the area. Again, that's not anything to do with this application that's before you. The neighbors had come forward and made comments with respect to prior applications that were denied. As the board knows, as your professionals have testified or provided you the guidance, each application stands on its own and should be judged on its own merits. And we believe we met the requirements for that. If, in fact, there was a concern moving forward about the lots being remerged, we've agreed that we would put a deed restriction on the property. If there was an, if there was a concern about an impact on the property adjacent to it, we agreed we could shift so to have the 15-foot setback along that property and only 10-foot on the other side. The applicant is willing to concede and try to work with the board and the professionals and the neighbors here, but we, we do believe we've met the justification for the granting of the variance, and we have said.
Just one question. He cited the fact that there's, that it's gonna be low-cost, affordable housing is one of the stipulations.
No, no. No.
What did you say? How did you say it then?
The R4 zone allows for people to have the zoning so that.
Yes, the square of lot size. I'm just reading from your ordinance.
It, it's not low income.
No, and we're not proposing low income. I saw your eyes go up on that, and that was not the intent on it.
Can I just ask you a question? How, maybe I'm missing the math here, and I, I don't think I passed math in college. How would you be able, if the lot was 100 feet deep and not 120, meet the width variant?
Because, because if it was 100 feet deep and we still had the 19,200-square-foot area, it would have.
Oh, wow, of course, okay. But you don't, you only got.
Right, no, we're saying, but that's a hard, that's a hardship.
That's not a good argument. Yeah, that's, okay.
But again, we believe the C2 variance justifies that. And the, 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 the benefits outweigh the detriments. We just pointed that out as an aside on that issue.
Can I ask our team a question? Probably Mr. Brown. Keep me honest, can I, so I get that we, the renter piece, I get completely. Are we allowed to take traffic into consideration when considering the application?
I'm gonna talk to our expert here who has a lot of experience with traffic, Mr. Higgins.
Where you have a situation, you know, it's a two-lot subdivision, quite frankly, adding one additional lot is not going to be a substantial detriment.
So.
It may, it may add one more, a couple more cars a day, but in, on the course of the big picture, it's not gonna help be a substantial detriment. I think you would have a tough time making an argument, especially since you have reports from both police and fire that are basically claiming.
So I can consider or I can't consider it?
You can, but I don't know, like, if this were to go to court and you were to use that as a basis for denying an application, I don't know, I, I think the courts would just shake their heads and say, no, that's not a reason. Only because, I mean, if this was a six or seven-lot subdivision, a situation like this, maybe you could consider it. The other thing is, if, if this lot were developed with a much larger house with a lot of bedrooms, you might have more traffic with that type of house than with two smaller houses. And you have nothing on the record that would say one thing or the other. I think the lack of a record is even a bigger reason why.
Record referring to?
Record before, before the board. There's been no discussion about traffic. The other thing I did, I do want to clarify, because both sides, the, the neighbors and the applicant's attorney have said, I have said there's no detriment, and that is not what I said. The standard is no substantial detriment. When you read my report, it says, I don't think there's a substantial detriment. Whenever there's a variance involved, the courts have said, just by virtue of the fact[1639.11] said, just by virtue of the fact there's a variance, there is a technical detriment. So there is a detriment.
I apologize if I misspoke. I didn't mean to mischaracterize your testimony, but-
I just wanted to get that on the record that the standard is substantial detriment. That's, that's the only thing to go into traffic. You'd have, would have to be something substantial. You know, one more house with a couple trips a day, I don't think-
And I would just reference to your, to your counsel, the Duncan Donahue cases. In fact, when it's a, when it's a permitted use, you really shouldn't look to traffic. If there's addition, if there's existing traffic problems in the area, that's not really something that the board should-
Well, I, this is just different than Duncan Donahue. It is, you're creating two lots which are non-conforming or a non-conforming lot exists. So, I would think if it could be demonstrated there's a substantial detriment, then I think the board could consider it. I just don't see how this could be shown as a substantial detriment.
I can give you a couple of reasons, but they probably will fly here.
If it is substantial.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments by the board? All right, then counsel, you have nothing else to add?
At this point, no, correct.
And so are you suggesting that we close the hearing?
Yes, correct.
Or with respect to my report?
With your report, I think we agree, we agreed to it, so.
All the conditions set forth in Mr. Fitzgerald's report.
To be clear, then, before we take an action, I just want to clarify one thing. In my, three things that I wanted as conditions, I said post an acceptable bond. That was barely worth it. Said it should have been post an acceptable guarantee. Not, it doesn't have to be bond.
I would ask if the house comes down prior to the subdivision.
Absolutely. We're not going to put a lot line through an existing structure.
No, 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 but I mean, if in fact the house came down before MAP was filed, we wouldn't need any performance.
It's going to come down before the MAP's filed. That's one of my conditions.
Right.
We're not going to create a, a lot line going through an existing structure.
No, but he's asking-
He can accept the relationship to, to the performance.
You have to bond it because we don't know that, under the land use law, we're allowed to bond, or under the new bonding statute, which took effect this past January, the towns allow, allowing, allowed to bond for clean, you know, demolition and cleanup. That's where we're bonding. We're not bonding any improvements unless there's right-of-way improvements that come with the-
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the mechanics of when it's going to get posted in relation to the, to a subdivision.
Before the MAP is filed.
Okay, we would look to probably-
And the work will be done before the MAP is filed. We're not-
Probably do it as a minor, as a, as a deed, but that's fine. We can work out the details.
No, I have a comment that I, listening to the testimony and to the lawyers, as far as the pros and cons of the both scenario, hearing about the traffic and congestion and safety of the neighborhood versus having him develop two lots versus leaving one big lot. So, it's, you got away the pros and cons. And in my mind, what I'm thinking, if, as long as there's a deed restriction and there's only, there'll be two homes put on it versus a McMansion, obviously that's what we're agreeing upon if we go in that direction, correct?
And are, we were, we would agree to that as a condition of approval.
It's the conform, and the point I'm going with is the conformance of the neighborhood. If having these houses put on these lots fit into the neighborhood correctly, because that's the first rule in, as far as I'm concerned in planning, what does the neighborhood look like and is this going to stand out or does it work with the neighborhood? And what I'm getting from you guys are all telling me that it does. So it's kind of a, it's a dilemma that we're, that we have to decide which way is the best for this neighborhood and for the people that are trying to make a division, a subdivision.
Can I pick you back off of that for one second? So, we're hearing the concerns everybody has and I'm, I'm, is there, is there something that we could do to fence this in at any level so that there's some protection that the, the community has? I don't know what the, I don't know what, I don't know what, what level that is, but is there something we could do here to?
I, I'm not sure what you can do to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors or the concerns because they don't, they don't want to change.
Right, well, they're nervous about it being rented out, houses being too big.
Can't do anything.
Can't do anything about those things.
You can't look at the neighborhood and make your own judgment, having heard all of this, whether you think it changes the character or not. Maybe there's nothing-
Maybe you want to put off about and go look.
Right. And that's where I was going is that, you know, you have, you have the right as a, as a board member to go and look at the neighborhood and weigh everything you've heard from the neighbors, weigh what you've heard from the applicant and his professionals, weigh what you've heard from our table and, and make your decision as to whether you think it's substantially impacting maybe in an adverse way or not.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I, I agree. I, I actually went and took a look at the neighborhood this weekend. I actually have a friend who lives over on Perrine, so I know what's been going on in that, that direct area. I know there's houses that have been, you know, good-sized houses, 4,000, 6,000 square foot houses that have gone up in the area recently, within the last year or so.
But I mean, did you find it valuable in your own mind, having had that experience and listened to it and put it in perspective or?
I, I, I did. I, I, I found that, you know, driving down the streets, which was, it was alluded that they're very thin and they're cracked because I couldn't turn my car around and it's a small car, you know, when I was looking for the subject property. So I, I mean, I, I think that if you want, we can table this till the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, well, I, our deputy mayor has a question, but then I'll go back.
Sure. I apologize. I, I do agree with you. I'm willing to table that. So, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask for a straw poll, straw poll. No, not, no, not at the, no, 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 I apologize. Actually, if the audience believed it or not, those that testified. So let me ask it without asking it that way. So, if I heard correctly, there were some people that testified that they would prefer one house instead of two. I don't know if I heard-
I think that's definitely true.
Okay, so then placing a deed restriction on it would actually a lit, would create a problem for creating one house. So-
That's also true.
I would request that the board consider possibly not putting the deed restriction on because that may satisfy more of the neighbors if I heard the testimony correctly.
But a comment on that is that if you had one house with the neighbor, how would the neighborhood feel with a 4,000, 5,000 square foot house?
It's not, that's not a guarantee that it would be a 4,000 square foot house. There's not a guarantee that these two houses won't be the maxed out. There's just, there's no guarantees on that. The ordinance is the ordinance.
Right.
But if we put the deed restriction on it, limits their ability. Granted, they could come back and take the deed restriction off. I get that.
Limit their ability to, I'm sorry.
If council was willing to put a deed restriction on it, say that they wouldn't combine the lots to create one, I'm saying that if I heard the testimony, the comments and the testimony from the neighbors, I'm sensing that the majority would prefer one house over two. So if we didn't put the deed restriction on, that would satisfy some of the neighbors.
Potentially, sure.
Potentially, right.
And then their argument though is that based on the purposes of the MLUL, it should be two lots. That's why I believe the applicant is stipulating to make the, that one lot, which has one house on it, more conforming, that they would stipulate. Is that the correct counsel?
No, you, you are correct.
I, I think what you have to look at is what's before you is, is a subdivision. And their argument, and I don't disagree with it, is that having the two smaller, the applicant's argument, having the two smaller lots, smaller homes on it is a better planning alternative in terms of the character of that neighborhood than one larger lot with a large home on it. And by granting the subdivision, if you were granted, you would be giving the opportunity for that to happen. Now realistically, if this house, if this lot were to be sold as a single lot tomorrow and a large home built on it, technically, legally, that's not detrimental because it's fully conforming to the zoning. But in terms of the character of the area, it may, may not fit in. So, so if you grant a subdivision, you're allowing the opportunity for something that's fits in better with the character of the neighborhood than a single large house built on a single lot. But you're not guaranteeing that's going to happen.
Correct, understood.
And that's your argument, counsel, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
If there are no other questions, i- if you're inclined to table, which is I believe where you're going, there is a rationale for that. First of all, as our fine secretary noted before, we are way, way over an hour.
Yes.
We were, I, I think going along with the public and the applicant to, to go well beyond what we normally would. So, that's a logic. Also, as counsel would concur, you certainly have the right to go observe that and especially-
One thing, if they do go out to look at it, if, if a question issue comes up, I know the public, the, the hearing was closed, will we be able to reopen to address anything based upon the site visit?
Sure, why not?
I'd rather raise that now rather than-
Why not? I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay, thank you.
And also, to, to clarify, I mean, counsel knows the rules and, and members of the public may not, but you know, the purpose is not to go out and talk to, to the neighbors-
Correct.
Not to talk to the applicant at all, but again, it's to, to use their senses to, to absorb what's been heard tonight and to, and, and maybe help them come to a better conclusion. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious, again, hearing a lot, a lot of this, I understand like kind of both sides. But Jim, I'm wondering, can, can you weigh in on, on the counsel's, counselor's comment that this does meet all the justifications and the benefits outweigh the detriments?
Well, I think that's, that's-
Can you comment on it?
That you-
Because that's objectively looking at it.
As I said, I like, the fact, I, I think there is a benefit. I think there's a benefit to two smaller lots as opposed to one large lot and one large house in terms of fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. But you have to make a decision whether that is a substantial benefit that substantially outweighs any detriments. And the other, and along with the other items that their expert discussed. And I don't want to try and lead you in one direction or the other. I think this is a decision that you have to make on this application.
Yeah, I would-
And you know, you know me well enough that if I feel strongly about something, I'm going to put it in my report one way or the other that it should or, you should or should not do something. And I think this is something that you, you as a board have to decide.
Fred, your, your question's perfect and it is a true balancing test. We've said that many times. It's, it's up to the board. You know, there's, there's discretion permitted, you know. You have to weigh everything you've heard based on, I, I think we're emphasizing the C2 rather than C1, counsel.
I, I agree.
We have to admit that. So, think of all those applications you've had since you've been on the board dealing with that balancing test. This may be, this may be one of the tougher ones you've had, even though we've had, you know, very, very large areas, but it's a tough decision, isn't it? So, you'll, you'll do the right thing.
Okay, so I, I believe that we're going to close the hearing for now to be reopened at our next normal or regular meeting.
No, I don't think we're going to close the hearing. We're going to carry it.
Okay, I'm sorry, correct.
For the public, there won't be any new advertising. And I think we should highlight when the next meeting is going to be.
Next meeting will be August 27?
Yeah, we're going to ask, counsel's properly getting to the next step. So, even though this is the first application, what boards always try to do, we want to make sure that the applicant will agree to extend the decision of the board. And counsel is, I think, whispering to me that he agrees to that. And so, we'll have him sign it.
I should get. Yeah, I can.
Yeah, why don't you sign?
Any, any process for us going to see the, see the area? Any, any process for us to go see the area or do we, can we just go down on our own?
Could go on your own.
Do you have a process? You can go at any time?
You can't go groups though.
No, go individually and go take a look. I've already been there, but I'll go take another look now that we've heard it's had some testimony. I think it's worthwhile. I don't think, I don't, this was not a, I thought it was going to be a little easier than this, but apparently not. And I think that in all fairness, I think we have to go take a look to see. It's the first time we've already done that, I think.
I think it is, so at least for a good number of years. I think we're done with this application, correct? We have one other application coming up?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, I think the last matter with chairman is that-
Gold Entertain Enterprises Care of Sale and Management.
Thank you.
Block 34, Lot 27, 806-808 West Park Avenue, Ocean Zone R7. This is an application for a minor site plan subcommittee approval in order to demolish and fill in an existing in-ground swimming pool at this apartment complex. I think that we, in, in our session upstairs, discussed this. I believe that there were a couple of requirements by Mr. Fitzgerald. You want to just give it quickly?
Oh, yeah, basically, I think, I don't really have my thing in front of me. I can't remember. I wrote it a month ago. Whatever they were, they're in that letter.
Right.
Yeah, they needed, they needed whatever outside agency permits. All those agencies now require that you apply for a letter of no interest, so.
But I believe that was already in the packet that you sent out.
Maybe, but I didn't get it.
Oh, okay.
It's only a bookkeeping thing.
Okay. Right, and Mr.-
And you had to post a bond.
Right, and it posted bond?
Guarantee.
Right.
Better.
Okay.
Possible guarantee.
And-
I think the, the regulation conditions upon applying-
Yeah, that's easy.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Subject to that will do a vote?
I don't think we need to vote. I think it's already been, we've already basically approved this. This minor sub-
So you should vote on it?
You should vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
A second.
Yes.
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 Mr. Fitzgerald.